Good morning. It's 9:00 AM and I will call to order the July 22nd meeting of the Saline County Board of Commission. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Commissioner Shadwick?
Here.
Commissioner Grievous?
Here.
Commissioner Sparks?
Here.
Commissioner Weath?
Here.
Commissioner Hay?
Here.
If you're able to stand, please do so and join me in the flag salute followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, we will move into our citizens input portion of the meeting where members of the public may speak on county government, usually limited to three minutes, and pertaining to items that will not be discussed on today's agenda. Are there any members of the public who wish to address the commission? Seeing none, we'll move into the consent agenda, which consists of approval of tax rule adjustments, approval of accounts payable, approval of public forum agenda, approval of county commission minutes of July 1st, 2025, approval of county commission minutes of July 1st, 2025. Are there any commission who wish to add or delete items from the consent agenda?
Move approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We'll move into the action items.
Bid award for the 2025 culvert lining project with Justin Mater, county engineer.
Morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
So yeah, on July 15th at 11 o'clock, we opened bids for our 2025 culvert lining project. We did receive three bids this year. In your packet, you should have a copy of the bid tabs. And I know it's a busy spreadsheet, but we got 16 sites selected this year. And so we split out each site, you know, where we bid out the lining and then the end section for each one of them. So I do apologize for the busyness of the spreadsheet. So Mayor Specialty Services was, has been our contractor that's done this work the last two years. And they were again the low bid this year. We did evaluate the bids from the last two years and we noticed that there is kind of a a break about a 30 inch and lower as far as the existing pipes to line. And so we selected pipes that are smaller this year. Thinking that it was going to be another contractor that won the bid. However, talking with Mayor Specialty Services, we did make some suggestions on things that they can do to lower their price. And this is when they were doing construction, you know, doing things they didn't really need to do. And so they applied those changes to their bid and so there's a low bid again this year. The terms for action would be to accept the bid unit prices from Mayor Specialty Services for all 16 pipe locations, accept a bid from a different contractor, or reject bids and direct staff to the wishes of the board. Staff recommends to accept a bid from Mayor Specialty Services for culvert lining at 16 locations for an estimated cost of $276,582. Funds for this project will be taken from our 125 account or our two mil, which is our special bridge construction fund. And this fund has a current unencumbered balance of $1,527,000. Questions?
Just a quick question here. Were all of the recommendations that you had sent to this company, did you, those all same recommendations went to the other vendors?
It was all part of the specifications.
Okay.
They were going beyond the specifications. It really has to do with the extensions on it. And they were, they were hiring a contractor to extend existing culverts with a corrugated metal pipe. And they didn't really need to do that because all the liners are actually a structural pipe. You know, and so they were, they were hiring a subcontractor and adding a lot of material and costs to their bid that they didn't really need to do.
Gotcha. Thank you.
What all do we take money out of that fund for? Because it's a bridge fund. So remind me how that fund got started and what do we take out of it? I mean...
So, so yeah, we call it the special bridge fund, but if you read what that is, it's bridges and culverts for that. And so what we pay out of that fund is anything associated with a bridge replacement. When I say a bridge, I'm talking about a federal definition of a bridge, which is a structure longer than 20 feet from end to end. And then we also take our reinforced concrete box projects, which we have, we're advertising right now for bids on our next package. We also purchase our pipe for our yard for, you know, the projects that we do at the road and bridge. And then for the lining is the main project.
Okay, so it's not just bridges, it's culverts and...
Correct.
Yeah, okay, good. And that started, that started way before me, didn't it?
Yes.
Yeah, it's, I couldn't tell you. It was, yeah, definitely way before me.
Because I can't remember starting it. Good, okay. And what did you say the balance of that is right now?
$1,527,000.
Okay, and that will, that will last us till when?
So, you know, like right now, so for this one here, we've got 276,000. We've got our, the box projects that are advertising right now, that's going to be around another 500,000. But that money doesn't come out until the contractor is building these projects.
Right.
Okay, and so, which might not be till next year. So we might have, you know, two mils worth of funds coming into this, you know, fund. And really nothing, not much going out because it's really, we pay them when they build it. And we give, our contractors are pretty big window to build projects, you know, so we're, we're feeling work. You know, you gotta think that KDOT's the big dog, you know, in this industry. Contractors are focused on that work. And so, you know, the one thing that I can control on the cost is a big window. And the bigger window we can give contractors, you know, the more interest there is and, you know, which the more interest there is, the more competition, the prices lower.
Great, thank you.
One quick question. And you mentioned that the, the funds are paid when they start the project? Is that 100% of the funds or just portion of it, then when they're finished?
We, right, so we pay for a completed bid item, okay? So for each one of these sites, you know, so for like site one, there's a liner. So if they line it, then we'll pay them for that one site on that one liner. We won't pay them for the end sections until the end sections are actually installed. It's the same thing like for a bridge project, you know, will, you know, there's, there's lots of bid items. Mobilization, you know, as soon as they move into a site, you know, we'll pay them 50%. But we don't pay them for like any concrete until concrete is actually placed, you know, on the project and installed. Same thing with rebar, rock, I mean, you name it. So it, the payments really drag out.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we approve RFA 2025-105 as presented.
Before we do that, I just want to ask, is there any, any comments from the public? Is there any other comments or questions by the commission?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve RFA 2025-105 as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next item?
CDBG grant agreement with Rosie Walter, Senior Services Director.
Good morning Commissioners.
Good morning.
This request for action is to sign the grant agreement between the State of Kansas Department of Commerce and Saline County for a community development grant or CDBG funds under the large community facilities category. The specific project application includes rehabilitation improvements to the senior services building, the sidewalks and parking lot in the area generally bounded by the senior service center location at 245 North 9th Street. Within the city of Salina, that will consist of improvements to approximately 26,000 square foot parking area, create approximately 5,300 square feet of new parking, add lighting and walkways, including excavation and removing 3,600 square feet of sidewalk and installing new four-inch sidewalks that are ADA compliant, and include ramps, striping, parking blocks and signage, installing lighting and pole bases, removing and replacing approximately 6,935 square foot roof with existing roof type, which is a bitmat. The general construction costs including, but not limited to, project sign, fencing, construction barriers. Additional work includes surveying, administration, architectural engineering design, construction management, bonding, permitting and insurance. The grant award is for $712,460 and that will go towards a total project cost of $937,460. The alternative for action is to approve by signature the grant agreement between the State of Kansas Department of Commerce and Saline County for the CDBG funds under the large community facilities category, or deny the request. Staff suggest approve the grant agreement between the State of Kansas and Department of Commerce for the Saline County for the Community Development Block Grant under the large community facilities category. The budget impact, we would get $712,460 from CDBG funds. And CIP, 200,000 from past years that we've built up for this project. The Earl Bain Foundation, 15,000. Donations, 10,000 for a total project cost of $937,460. And I'll take any questions.
That math doesn't add up for me. So 400 and some thousand plus 200,000 plus 15 plus 10? What am I missing to get to 900?
Are you looking at, it's 225,000 plus the 712,460 equals 937,460? Are you looking under budget impact?
Yeah, what, what, what does the taxpayer out on this? What is the taxpayer paying for on this?
Well, I mean, the CIP funds.
It's 200,000?
Yeah, would be taxpayer dollars.
Okay.
Is there a timeframe on spending this grant money?
Well, the, the project actually starts July 1 and they give you, I'll have to look back in the agreement. It's over a year. I mean, we're ready to go though.
All right. Other thing is that, is there accommodations that's been made for parking and getting into the building and out of the building with all this construction happening?
Well, in talking to Johnny, and Johnny's actually here with me today, our thoughts were we were going to divide the parking lot in half so that we still have parking. I mean, we're going to need parking.
That's why I was just curious how that would...
So they'll half, do half and then do the other half.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It'll be hard.
So Rosie, this parking, that's just over at the center itself? That's not the parking lot across?
No. No, what this, what this is going to do is it's all the existing parking lot that we have right now. We're going to tear all that up and then we're actually going to go on the northwest corner, take the parking out to the sidewalk. So we're going to have additional 17 spaces for parking and then the concrete, which I'm hoping for. So I'll show you later in my update.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Any comments by the public? Any other comments or questions by the commission?
Just like to say, I appreciate your work on going after this grant. It's addressing some problems that we've had at the senior center over at that building. The hazard of the, the shape of that pavement and having senior center, senior people walking in there, it's, it's been pretty...
I've got some good pictures to show you.
It's a long time coming because like I said, we're, we're really lucky somebody hasn't really gotten hurt out in that parking lot.
Yes, that's true.
And I don't consider myself a senior, but I could trip on that pretty easily. Am I?
I am.
Well, I could trip. I saw, I've been there many a times, so thank you. And I echo what Commissioner Weath says, that the work you do and the grant you apply for really make a difference.
Thank you.
So thank you.
Do I have, here a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we approve RFA 2025-101 as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve RFA 2025-101 as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next?
Establishment of Tax Levy Fund for Mental Health with Philip Smith Haynes, County Administrator.
Good morning Commissioners. The resolution before you today would be to establish a new tax levy fund. The intent of the new fund would be to transfer that money to Central Kansas Mental Health Center. For a number of years, we have been treating Central Kansas Mental Health Center as an outside allocation agency. The county is actually legally mandated to provide mental health services either through in-house county department or through a contract such as we have with Central Kansas Mental Health. And so as part of our budget discussions for 2026, the idea came up of we should stop treating them like an outside allocation agency and treat them like a special fund. And I found the statutory authority for doing that. The clerk needs a resolution on file to go ahead and establish that in the tax system. And so that is the item that is before you this morning. I'd be happy to answer questions.
And we're, we're not setting exactly what level we're at right now, are we?
Correct. This is just the establishment of the fund.
I want to applaud you for doing this. This is going to make so much easier for future administrators and future commissions.
Would this be similar to, to what a fire district is? I mean, would there be a separate?
It would be more similar to the two mil fund that Justin was just here talking about. And the fire districts are specific areas. This would be countywide, like the two mil fund.
Thank you.
It helps, I think it helps them with their budgeting too. I mean, there's some consistency there that they know that they're going to get a set amount every year from the county. So I think it's a win-win situation.
Any other comments by the public? Seeing none?
Mr. Chairman, I move we adopt resolution 25-2432 as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, adopt, adopt resolution 25-2432 as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Phil. Next?
Senior Services Update with Rosie Walter, Senior Services Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
One more time.
This is my quarterly update for period April through June 2025. Okay, the first one is the Dade Hansen Award. What? Push that button to me, Don. Okay, thank you. Senior Services received 25,000 from a grant application. Those dollars were used to finish the repairs to the garage and repair the Knight Street doors. And you can see the garage and the paint on the new doors and they're getting ready to tuck and point the old outbuilding. Grant awards. We just received the CDBG facilities grant. And these are some pictures of what we're going to replace. This is our roof. You can see it's an old bitmat roof. It has lots of drainage issues. I haven't been over there since the rain yesterday, but I'm sure we have some issues. A total of 712,460 has been awarded to the senior service with a match of 225,000. The total project cost is 934,460. And activities will include the parking lot, replacing uneven sidewalks, installing lighting around the building and replacing the roof. And here are, here's a picture of our sidewalks. You can see that they're broken. And staff has tried to paint on them so that you can see that they're uneven. Here is our parking lot. So it's like a patch quilt. You can see that it's just really deteriorated. Our bumper guards and all the striping that we have put in just does not last because the gravel moves around on it. This is what our parking lot looks like right now. I think it's more patched than it is regular asphalt. And I do want to thank the road and bridge department that comes out and they do patch it for us. Okay, under our events, USD 305, the Roosevelt Middle School students came over to the senior center and they played against our seniors in a pitch tournament. So I do not know who won, but they did have a lot of fun. So next year, we're going to do this again and maybe add a few more things with the kids. Let's Talk About It is a podcast that Candace over at the Health Department does. I went over there on the 25th and we discussed all the services provided at the senior center and then our need for volunteers for Meals on Wheels. Other events is, I gave a presentation, a presentation at Trinity Lutheran Church and we discussed volunteers and how you get on Meals on Wheels. And then I did a K-I-N-A, K-I-N-A radio spot and we talked about our fan program. We have, oh, we had like 500 different fans and seniors were able to take those with them. So they're cool through the summer months. We had our health fair, which was May 16th, and these are all of the vendors that were there. So we had about 43 vendors and we made up 500 packets for our patrons that went through and we ran out. So I'm not sure exactly how many people we did have go through. And there's some pictures of our vendors and their booths. Okay, and then other events, we had our volunteer appreciation dinner. We, on April 25th, we had about 180 people in attendance and we served fried chicken and staff helped. And then we had the flight crew from Kansas State came over and they served all of our seniors too, so it was kind of neat. Meals served for this quarter, April through June, we've served 32,868 meals, or I should say the county has served that many. For the mid-year, 61,800 meals is what we've served. And 97% of that 61,800 is subsidized, whereas 3% is just full pay. I gave you a comparison from '24 and '23, so you can see that we're still growing. 60,177 in '24 and a huge increase from those two years of '23, 57,484, so still growing. And here are some pictures of some of our seniors. These, these ones are our regulars that come in, I would say, every day. And they come in from morning and they're usually with us until we close. These two seniors, one of them is new. They just found out that their wives died, so they found something to bond over. And that's the reason why socialization is key. I mean, you come into the senior center and you get to talk to people that are going through a lot of the same things that you are going through. There's a student in our art class. And here's some more friends meeting in the dining room. And then our upcoming plans, we have the Sunflower Prayer that's coming up with the North Central Flint Hills Area Agency on Aging. It's September 16th and it'll be at the Tony's Event Center. Don Merriman is our volunteer that we're showcasing this year. Meals on Wheels America, two staff are attending the camp, their conference, Meals on Wheels America Conference in San Antonio, Texas in August. And I'm going to do a presentation for the Granny Brigade and we will talk about our need for volunteers. Budget update. This is a new format. You have not seen this one before. You have not seen this one before, but I'll go into the 2025, the first and second quarter. The revenues brought in is $355,506, and that's the general fund and donations. And then expenditures are listed below. So, the total amount of operations subsidized by tax dollars to run the senior center is $110,844 for half of the year.
I'm going to stop you just for a second. So, the general fund revenue comes from where?
The general fund revenue is the taxpayers, it's my budget.
Right, so the amounts, okay. All right, I got you.
Okay, and then I added my donation, so you can see how much money we brought. And then the expenditures. Any other questions? Can't hardly see it, can you?
No, it's fine. So, really, the amount of operations subsidized by taxpayer dollars now at the bottom, but it's also the general budget is taxpayer dollars, correct? Am I saying that right?
Yeah, the general budget is taxpayer dollars. I mean, the top is just the revenues brought in.
Right.
And then the second column is expenditures taken out.
Okay.
So, it kind of gives you an idea of what it costs the county to maintain the senior center. So, right now, mid-year, we're at $110,000. So, if you take that times two, I mean, we're looking at 220-ish or so.
Plus the general fund.
Plus, yeah.
It's taxpayer dollars. So, okay.
Yeah, it's just the money subtracted from it that we bring in, if that makes sense.
Nope. Doesn't to me, I'm sorry, doesn't to me. The amount of operations subsidized by tax dollars is $227,000 plus $110,000, unless I'm doing something wrong.
Okay, so the amount of money that we brought in, so for all the meals that we've sold and...
Yeah, you shouldn't have called it general fund revenue. That is your meal revenue.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
Then that makes sense, okay.
Okay, sorry.
The general fund, the general fund revenue is really that bottom line number, the subsidy.
Right.
Perfect.
What we've expended.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That makes sense.
That makes sense. Thank you.
Okay. Okay. The budget update continued. This talks about all of our revenue from grants, the CIP, EIP, and TIP. And you can see the past years, but going to 2025, we have requested, or no, we have $807,460, and the expenditures right now is $29,993. Of course, that's going to change when we start all of our projects under the CDBG. I mean, that'll go pretty quick. And then 2026, what we've requested is $368,700 from the CIP, and we will no longer need that because of the CDBG grant. And that is it. I'll take any questions.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Next.
The Treasurer's Idle Fund Report with Anthony Newell, County Treasurer.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Morning.
Morning.
This morning, I will be presenting our first quarter, excuse me, our second quarter idle fund report for a period ending Monday, June 30th, 2025. Starting at the top of my attachment and working down, starting with bank accounts, total funding available for this investment period was $62,824,859.77 this year. Those funds overall are up 5% over the same period last year. As you can see, our regular bank account accounts for 83.02% of our total investments. That 83.02 at 3.22% landed us $252,391.71 for interest in the second quarter. Moving down to certificates of deposit, total interest earned this year in the second quarter on idle funds was $466,757.60 compared to 2024 second quarter earnings of $583,289.51. This past quarter, we experienced an overall decrease of $116,531.91 on idle fund earnings over the same period this past year. Contributing factors for the decrease for this reporting period, we had three of our highest-rate CDs that ranged from 5% to 5.3% mature, and they were replaced with bids and accepted with bids that ranged from 4.6 to 4.3. The amount of the bids that we received are in line with industry standards and what we're seeing in the overall interest rate environment. Previously, our best-rate CD was 5.3%. Today, as I report to you, our high-rate CD is 4.5%. With that, I will stand for questions.
Nope.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next.
I'm sorry. I do have a question of Mr. Newell. Am I reading this right? Well, this is, we're looking at 20, this is 2026's second quarter?
This is...
Or '25, I'm sorry.
'25 second quarter, yes.
Okay, okay. So, when you put that 1.1 million up against, you're showing the interest earned as of December 31st. That should be...
That should reflect a year-to-date number. That's the number through the reporting period.
Okay.
To your point, accurately, it could potentially read through December 30th because that's where this period cuts off. In fact, it's our year-to-date number.
Okay, that's year-to-date, which is red in June.
And red through June.
So, there's six more months of interest going to be coming in.
Correct, respectively, half of the year.
That kind of scared me there.
Yeah. Yeah, no, we're going to continue collecting interest throughout the...
Thank you.
End of the year. Thank you, Commissioner. Any other questions?
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Administrator's Recruitment Timeline with Philip Smith Haynes County Administrator and Marilyn Nemar, Human Resources Director.
Good morning. So, as we have discussed a couple of times so far, you all are in need of a new county administrator to start April 1 of '26. And so, at our last conversation, we had a discussion about having a outside firm or not, and you all said we'd like HR to do this, but then also, you know, potentially bring in a firm if there's, if we're not satisfied with the first round of candidates. So, we have constructed, Marilyn and I worked together on what it would look like to provide a schedule that does that. So, the target, of course, is to have an employment agreement with a new county administrator sometime in February. And so, working backwards from that date through interviews and so forth, we would really like to get a recruitment flyer out right after Labor Day. And so, we will be bringing a couple items to you over the next couple meetings. We're proposing to do those actually in the 8:30 work sessions the next August 5th and September 2nd. Just think there'd be more opportunity for discussion in that environment. And then you can see the rest of the dates, but we, like I said, attempted to do something that sort of cut that middle ground for you. Do you have anything to add?
I really don't have anything to add. I think you have in your packets the timeline that Phil put together for you that is very realistic.
And just a quick question here in regards to that. And as soon as we get the review resumes and then starting, if we just stayed with our department, you to finish this whole process, we'd follow the timelines on 11/24? And/or either that, or we went to the right column and hired an outside source to finish that project?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman. So, yeah, the green lines are sort of if we stay with HR, or the red is if we feel that we need to bring in a consultant.
And can I ask what is going to be that indicator to feel like you need to bring in that consultant?
I think it's similar to any department. You're going to look at your first round of candidates, and if you don't see what you want there, then we just start it over again, start that process again.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay.
I would say that the executive staff that Matten outlined, they just built another Phil Smith Haynes, if I read everything. So, good luck. I hope we hit the jackpot.
Yeah, so the next, thank you for teeing that up, Commissioner, because the next step then, if there are no other questions or tweaks to the actual schedule, the next step would be to develop an ideal candidate profile. And so, as a way to start that process, that's ultimately your ideal candidate, right? But as a way to start that process, we did ask that question of department heads and elected officials, and they provided some feedback, just things for you all to think about. You know, I've also had a conversation with Melissa McCoy, and she said she could also ask that same question of the public on social media and see if we get any feedback there, and that would also provide some additional information for you all just to think about. So, that would be the conversation we would have on August 5th.
Okay. Any questions or other comments? Thank you. Next.
Commissioners' comments?
I don't have a comment, but I have a couple of questions from our previous meeting at 8 o'clock, and I left my figures in there, so if my fellow Commissioners can help me. What does the courtroom, third floor, what is their budget? What do they get? Does anybody offhand have that? I mean, I guess I'm getting to. It's bothering me that we're cutting $5,000 out of their budget for desks. I just can't believe that they can't find $5,000 for desks. And, you know, they're going to go back there, and they're going to say, "I'm sorry, we would like to have gotten you a desk, but the Commissioners axed the desks." That doesn't make sense to me. Does anybody have an amount, or?
No.
I don't know. If it's not, I'll look it up, but that still bothers me. Go ahead.
And so, you may recall at our last meeting, when we did the quarterly budget update, the courts were the only general fund department that were above 50% of their budget this far end of the year. So, they, last year, they exceeded their budget. I'm expecting them to exceed their budget again this year, and they, you know, have been asked for an increase for next year. So, it's one of those things where, yeah, they probably don't have $5,000. But be that as it may, that's just a process issue because a large, a capital expenditure of $3,500 or more gets put on that EIP list, so.
Well, $695,000 is their budget, and the mean Commissioners are going to take $5,000 out of the Clerk's desk, so. Anyway, the next question I had was, and I'm sorry, I should have asked this with Rosie, but my math still isn't adding up on her thing. She said there was a match of $225,000. Can anybody remind me what that was? Who matched that?
$200 was CIP.
And then the Dane Hansen.
Earl Bane.
Earl Bane.
And...
Earl Bane was $15,000.
Yeah.
And then another donation of 10, but when she started going back again, she said there was a match of $225,000 also that got us to the $900,000. Who's that match from?
I thought that that, all those things she listed equaled that $225,000 match. So, I was thinking the grant, the donations.
So, that was the match. So, that's how my math isn't adding up.
Right. That's what I understand.
$225 included the CIP, the Earl Bane, and the Dane Hansen.
Right.
Okay. I didn't do well in math in school, so.
That's hard to believe, but okay.
It's hard to believe.
I don't believe it. All right, whatever.
Way too modest.
Yeah.
Any other announcements?
We're moving on to announcements. I'll just remind folks that there is not a scheduled county commission meeting next Tuesday. So, we will be back again on August 5th.
I'd want to go back to comments real quick. Does that matter? Is that wrong? I just, two things I wanted to say. We brought it up in the contingency fund or discretionary fund. I just want to make sure that that's still thought of as we're doing budget. I realize that's treading on lots of uneven ground like at Senior Center. And then the other thing was, we didn't talk about this, but I would like us to consider as we're doing budget that what mid-year money there might be available for positions that are necessary. So, I didn't say it in there. I meant to say it in there, but I want to make sure I say it now, so just out there, so.
Okay. Next. We move into executive session.
So, if there are no other items of announcement, staff would request that the Commission recess into executive session for preliminary discussion regarding the potential acquisition of real property for 15 minutes and reconvene in this room at 9:57.
So, moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to go into executive session. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.